Call this meeting to order. If you are able, please rise and say the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'd like to let you all know that we are doing this as a dual-purpose meeting. We have individuals here in person. Board members Bob Tosso, Diane Hansen, Jennifer Schmidt, Heidi Larson, and Jason Rohr are attending the board meeting in person. And board members Roger Hout, and Greg Allen, and Melissa Gleason are attending via Zoom. Steve Veldkamp will be joining us later this evening. So we will be doing it duly, and just as a reminder, to please have your volume down or off on your computers here in the room if you are watching the meeting over Zoom, as it'll produce bad feedback. As questions on Zoom pop up, please make sure, I will have my volume up on my laptop, but please speak up loudly when you have a question, as I need to also be able to view the drive, so I won't be visually looking at Zoom directly throughout the entire meeting, and I don't want to miss a question that you may have. So please speak up when you have any questions, so I don't miss you. Dr. Leck?
One comment too. You're going to want to unmute yourself, not your speakers, but unmute your microphone when you're speaking, so the people on Zoom that are attending can hear your questions as well, so, and we can share.
So we are trial and airing this new transition of dual-purpose meetings, Zoom and in-person. So here we go. School board norms. Diane, can you do them for us, please?
Yes. The board development norms are: to share and respect varied opinions and speak with a united voice once a decision has been reached; to prudently prioritize resources in a student-centered manner that aligns with the district's strategic plan; to exhibit a mindset of continuous improvement through adequate preparation for meetings, and a commitment to board education; and finally, to commit to assessing board effectiveness to ensure high-quality governance for the staff, students, and community of Jamestown.
Thank you, Diane. Could you try your mic now? Off. There we have it. Very good. So moving on in our agenda, we have nothing under public communication. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Heidi?
I see down, there will be some discussion about working with the University of Jamestown. Just want to declare that I am employed by the University of Jamestown.
Thank you for that. Do we have a motion to allow Heidi, Bob motions to allow Heidi to vote on that discussion and that motion, and Jason seconds it? Is there any discussion? All right. Those on Zoom, please unmute your mics. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Tuesday, Jennifer, Melissa Gleason, I also need to make aware that I work for the University of Jamestown Athletics Department.
Thank you, Melissa. Melissa is declaring a conflict. Can I have a motion to, Jason motions to...
Allow Melissa to vote and discuss?
Jason, a motion to allow Melissa to discuss and vote on UJ, and Bob seconds. Any discussion? All those, unmute your mics. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Diane?
I suppose I should declare that my husband works for UJ as well.
Ah, yes. Wow. Quite the employer we have in the building. So can I have, Jason motions to... Okay, and Bob seconds. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. There we go. So moving on into our agenda, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Bob?
Second.
Seconded in by Roger. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving into our regular meeting, I did want to rearrange the meeting just a little bit. We have some guests with us this evening, and I'd like to allow them to go first. So we'll go, jump right to reports with the ad hoc report, and then after we've heard that report, we are going to move up from new business, the building and grounds, the ad hoc committee recommendation. So we're just going to move one piece in the agenda up earlier. Any issues with that or concerns? All right, thank you. So in our regular meeting, we have nothing under recognition, and we have nothing under correspondence, so we'll move into the reports. We had an ad hoc committee report. Mr. Tosso and Steve Veldkamp was late, so Mr. Tosso, do you want to get us rolling, or Dr. Leck? And then Mrs., I do believe it's Dr. Peterson, if you want to also join us at the microphone, that'd be fine too. Thank you.
About approximately two weeks ago, the ad hoc committee met, consisting of several people from both UJ and Jamestown Public Schools, to review potential opportunities to share facilities, particularly the track, an update for the track, an update of, for a football field. Both entities need work with their facilities, and it's become apparent that the community wishes the two to work together as a result of bond issues that the district has tried to pass. We did make note of the fact that UJ and Jamestown Public Schools work together in several areas. And visiting with Dr. Peterson at a different meeting at noon, I don't think the community realizes how much we do work together academically, athletically, a lot of various areas, so, but this is, this is kind of a different venture. So, and we're excited about it. We had an excellent meeting with excellent discussion. We've been, I've been around in one role or another for about 18, 19 years. I don't know how many meetings I've attended on this subject. This is, this is the best of those meetings that we've had. This is the first time I came away that there was actually follow-up and discussion, and it looks like there's a plan in place that can make some things happy, so make some things happen. So I was very pleased with the way the meeting went, and I've been pleased with, with the aftermath. Ultimately, there's two parts of this, obviously. UJ has some needs that they want to do with their track, their football field. We feel that continuing, that putting a lot of money into the football field at Washington is counterproductive. We need to do some things. And I'm not sure that that would be a good investment of taxpayer dollars. So that's, that's what we're going to have to discuss. It's not for tonight, but it's, the things that Jamestown Public Schools needs, and how we can be a partner with the University of Jamestown in a new facility. Obviously, both of us need a track. That's the one thing. It's sad that a community this size doesn't have a competition track, can't host track meets, because it should be a center for that. So that's one thing. Football, of course, we can go on and on about the football field in Washington and what needs to be done there, and there are some other things that we need to talk about. If the football field moves away from Washington, then we have to do something with practice facility. I mean, there is a set of dominoes here, but we're not ready to have that major discussion yet. But it's more than just, we're going to play football at UJ. There's more to it than that. So that's some things that have to be worked out. This isn't something that's just going to happen easily. We need to determine, obviously, this is a financial obligation from both UJ and Jamestown Public Schools. UJ has a fundraising arm that, and I believe they've been out and working on that. We really don't. So we have to find, and I don't think right now, the discussion that we had two weeks ago pretty much firmed up that going to the community and asking for new dollars might be difficult with the trouble that we've had with bond issues. So we have to try and find the dollars to take part in this with dollars that we already have. And that's something that Dr. Leck is working on, and hopefully at a future meeting, we'll have a discussion on that. But the important thing is, from our perspective, is we want to be a partner in this. We don't want to be a renter. We want to be a part of the planning process. We want to be a major user of the facility. And I guess that's it. Later on, we'll have to have Dr. Leck, and Steve and myself, as part of the committee, are looking for some direction from the board to move further with this. So we'll be making a recommendation later on in the agenda, and we would appreciate support on that. So I guess, Dr. Peterson, or Dr. Leck?
Dr. Leck, if you want to fill in, and then Dr. Peterson will have you follow. Thank you.
Oh. I think what you see as an example represented here is what Bob talked about, great partnerships that have existed for a long time, and I don't think everybody does know all of the different ways in which the university and the public school system already does collaborate and already does work together. And it's because of that really strong relationship that we even have an opportunity here. And the reality, I'm sure that Dr. Peterson will reinforce later, is that University of Jamestown is going down this road already. If we have an opportunity to address a major priority from a facility standpoint in our community, that also matches what the really firm guidance we've gotten from our community. If you had a chance to review that long-range plan that will be later on in the agenda, that is one of the major themes that came from 80-plus people that completed that survey was, "If you need this, why aren't you working together?" And that is a conversation that we've had, but I don't think we've ever been this far down the road. And we had to, I think, as a school district, look at the opportunity to have that on in our own backyard. And it just wasn't the right time. The community said, hey, this is, referendums are, you know, in essence, the democratic process. The community said, "We don't want to do that. That's not what we want." And we have this opportunity now to consider what's happening with the University of Jamestown, to take a facility that is not ours and make it partly ours. With that comes the obligation of, you know, what's our skin in the game? The school district has to be willing and able to commit. But there becomes the problem, because we don't have extra dollars, and as Mr. Tosso said, it's really going to be pretty difficult to go back to our community and say, "Here, we have another idea." I think the community said, "No, we've exhausted that possibility." From a, from a tax standpoint, we're at the place, we're at the highest capacity we want to be at, and we don't want to go down that road. And so we do have to find other solutions. The reason we need to, we need to, we'll be acting on recommendations later, or you will be acting on recommendations later as a board, is because we need to know if this is something that's supported or not. We aren't going to go down the road and do the work and then say, "Well, that's not really what we want to do." We really need some direction to know if, boy, if this is someplace that we should explore or not. If it isn't, well, the University of Jamestown has her answer, and they know, well, there doesn't need to be a Blue Jay on the field, I guess. There doesn't need to be a, you know, a Blue Jay side and a UJ side. They're going to have the direction. You know, the other piece of this, and Bob talked about, was if we are going to have a competition field on the UJ campus, that's a shared facility. What about practice? Well, to make that work, you know, part of this plan would have to be a practice facility at the high school. That would have to be part of that. You know, our activities directors, Dr. Peterson, myself, and some other staff have been involved with those conversations, and we've had a good chance to say, "This is what we feel like we need. This is what, this is what we feel like, or this is what the University of Jamestown feels like they need." Think we've got a pretty good sense of what that is. Another important piece of this is, you know, as Bob said, there's an opportunity to leverage. One of the things, and one of the many things that University of Jamestown does really well is talking to and getting fundraising dollars. I see this as a huge opportunity to address something from the facility standpoint. Continue a really strong partnership that's worked very, very well, and check a big box. I guess that's, that's my perspective on, on things.
Thank you. Dr. Peterson?
Thank you. And I guess for me, I'd just like to extend a thanks to the board and to Rob and Bob. We've had, Rob and I have gone back probably three or four years where we've been having discussions about sharing facilities. What are your needs? What are ours? So I would like to reiterate what Rob said. We have a very, very strong working relationship. And we work together both athletically and academically very, very well. And we enjoy that relationship when, when there has been capacity problems. At the university, we've shared space. When there've been capacity problems from the high school, we share space, both in our gymnasium, on our turf field. But then we also share the hockey field, the baseball field, the softball field, and numerous other things, and we've been able to work together very peacefully. And, and so I think we've demonstrated to this community that we can continue to do that. And we're, we're very grateful that that is the case in a small community like ours. To have two facilities very close to one another is probably not good use of anybody's resources. One of the questions that I often get asked, and I'm sure you did when the, when the last bond issue didn't make it, is, well, why, why do we have to spend a lot of money on football and track? It's four games, or it's five games, and it's two track meets, or this or that. But for us, and I'm sure the same for you, it represents about 20% to 25% of our student body. So it's not just about the four times they're going to compete, or the five times they're going to compete. It is about serving our students. For us, our mission at the University of Jamestown is to provide a holistic experience for our students. And that means that we provide a very, very robust expectation for co-curricular engagement. And we believe that is what makes University of Jamestown unique. In order to do that, we have to have many things, but one of them is facilities. And right now, with about 80 to 100 track athletes who cannot compete on that track, they can practice on it, but they can't compete on it. That's not acceptable. And we've been working together, sharing that space, for as long as any one of us in this room can probably remember. The track has been shared between the two of us for years and years and years. Football, we all enjoyed last football season's struggles with weather, and our, both of our fields, I'm sure, are very torn up. I know ours is, and it hasn't been crowned in years. And right now, we're the only school in the GPAC, the Great Plains Athletic Conference, who does not have turf. And I think you guys are the same. And we can argue from, from here to paradise whether or not that's good or bad, but the reality is that that allows our student athletes to play, because we aren't, we aren't put out by the impact of weather. So we do believe that in order to remain competitive and to provide that co-curricular learning opportunity for our students, we're going to have to have facilities. So with that, we went, we went at it and hired an architect and a construction manager, and we've put together plans, all the while working together with this community to understand what, what is, what is working and what isn't, what are the needs. And recently, you put the task force together, and together, we looked at, you know, things locker rooms, and we looked at, if you're going to compete there, where are you going to practice? And one of the things that I mentioned to Rob right away, not being on any of your committees before, is you have 100 football players driving over to Washington School, unloading at a rapid pace, while you probably have equally as many kindergartens, first and second graders getting on a bus. And I can imagine that if you're not going to compete there, you would still want to have your athletes driving over there. So we listened to that, and we've added that into our plan, an opportunity for practice space as well, so that we can eliminate that risk. So in our plan, we also added lighting, because we understand you play in the evenings, and that required us to consider lighting. And then, of course, it requires some kind of a home on game day. So then we added locker room space as well. So I think we've done a lot to work together to make this something that we can all be proud of, this community can be proud of. They, we, we are strong, strongly dependent on this community, just like you are. We aren't tax-supported, but we are donor-supported. And we need the community to support this project just as much as you do. So I think this is a win for you. I think it's a win for us. We benefit from each other's expertise. We benefit from each other's coaching, and all of the other things that will happen as a result of this. So if anybody has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer them, but we're an open book, and we're really excited for this opportunity to work together.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. Oh, Dr. Leck, did you have something to finish up?
Well, maybe one comment that I think we do need to reinforce. I said before, I think our community has said, "We're at our limits" in terms of what we can support. And so I do believe that Sally and I can make a plan that continues to utilize what we're already asking of people and create a plan. If you, if you remember, we have an ESG loan that we are paying back through our general fund. That is reaching the end. And there are some opportunities there to continue that, provide, you know, take advantage of this fortuitous opportunity that's been extended to us very graciously from the University of Jamestown, continue to look at some other building projects, but continue that, continue that, and extend that payment on. And so that would be a recommendation that I would make to you at a later date, you know, if that's, at least that's the planning I would work on, is an opportunity that extends that into the future beyond the ESG payment. Maybe pay that off early, extend that debt out again. But that would be an opportunity we could address, clip the peak, as you've heard me say before, in some of our other facility projects, and take advantage of this opportunity and kill a couple of birds with one stone, so to speak. But I think it's a great opportunity. From, from my standpoint, we haven't had an opportunity like this, and I think to be able to take advantage of this is a blessing. And if we don't, we still have to consider how we're going to address some of these needs. So I would just ask you to think about all those points as, as we make and have further discussion. Great, great opportunity.
Bob?
One of the things that I was pleased to hear when we had our meeting, Dr. Leck touched on it briefly, when we went, when we, we've been to the community three times and talked about the needs that we have, and the athletic complex is just a part of it. So as, as Dr. Leck kind of alluded to, in the planning that he and Sally are going to do, and he usually says, then by "we," he means Sally, but I won't say that. Sorry. But we have to, when we come with a plan and bring it to the public, it's going to have to include building needs to some extent. So that's something that, that we have to be aware of too, so that if there's, what we don't want to have happen is, is all of a sudden, people are coming to board members, which they would, and say, "You've been talking for years about all the needs in your building, and now the first thing you do is a football field," or, and that's all they're going to see. They're not going to see a, a complex at the high school. So let's make sure that we keep that in the back of our minds too, that the plan that Dr. Leck and Sally are going to put together will also include, it won't fix everything. We can't do that. But it, it will address some of the most, the biggest needs that we have in our schools across the district. So I thought, like I said, I thought the meeting we had was great. It addressed a lot of, a lot of needs. So my thanks to Dr. Peterson and Dr. Leck for putting this together.
Well, thank you, Bob and Steve. I know you took some time to go through all of this and look over it. So I just, I was wondering, when you looked at it, is it more of a, did it come to you as an opportunity? I mean, it truly is an opportunity as you were looking at it? Yeah, I'm asking my person that served on the committee.
Absolutely. It, it, this is, it's a great opportunity to meet a lot of the needs that the district has. And we can talk about long-term planning and everything else, and I don't, this isn't the time to get into some of those things. But Dr. Peterson talked about the kids leaving the high school, the boys leaving the high school, and the dangerous situation that we have. I get just as concerned on game nights, because the parking down there is terrible, and the traffic is terrible. The streets are narrow. There's so much parking on the streets. I can't believe that no one complains, but they don't, and they should. So it would address, I would think the people that live in, in the Washington attendance area would be very happy on Friday nights when there's no football games there.
Okay. And so when you were, when you were at this committee, it was more of a keep everything that we have currently, because we have no fundage to improve much more than the minimum. I know we spend $10,000, $5,000 a year fixed, piecemealing the bleachers at Ernie Gates. And those, so it's either keep everything that we have, exactly the same, because there is no extra dollars to do any major renovations, because I know like the, the practice facility needs a roof, or the shack that's down there. It needs, or did it get a roof? I know that it needed a roof, and the field needs to be recrowned. And I know the practice field behind it has holes in it that you can fall and break yourself in. So when, when you're looked, when you looked at this, it was keep everything as we have, because we have no way to improve it currently, or jump on this opportunity? Bob?
That's exactly right. And we could, we could make a long list. Ernie Gates is a great place for a football game. I enjoy going down there. The, it's gorgeous. To, my wife and I usually go early and have a hamburger, compliments of the boosters. And it really is a beautiful place for a football game. That being said, there's terrible bathroom facilities for guests. I, I can't imagine what MyNot, Bismarck, here, when we go double A and we're Devil's Lake Valley City, when they walk into the Washington Gym, and this, this is your locker room.
No shower?
No showers, nothing. That's not a facility that we can be proud of for our guests. We certainly get better treatment than that when we go wherever. So, and, and like I said, there's, there's always, there's always options. And one of the options would be to put a lot of money into Wash, into that area, into Ernie Gates, build new locker rooms, build restrooms, the whole bit, or do something like this. And this just seems to make so much more sense, we're going to wind up sharing a great facility. Another thing that, that I don't want to correct Dr. Peterson, we don't play four games. We probably play 15 or 20, because we've got a JV, we've got freshmen. I don't know if seventh and eighth grade would go there or not, but it, it does get used more than that, but that's just a scheduling thing. And, and I, I, we have the opportunity to create a really great facility for our students and our fans, and, and for our guests. And I just think not doing this would, I don't know what else we would do.
Diane, you had a question?
I just had a comment. I am absolutely thrilled. I think that Dr. Leck mentioned the democratic process. I think through three referendums, we've funneled down to what our public wants. And probably the number one comment that I got after the third fail was, why aren't you working with UJ?
Okay.
And I really appreciate all those people that came into the room and made this happen. And I really like it that UJ rhymes with Blue Jay. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Dr. Leck?
One of the things, and this gets along, some close to where Diane, what Diane was saying too, but one of the criticisms that we heard after the latest bond referendum, the latest ask was, that's closer to a want. The price tag was just too big. And we understand that, that, you know, you have to take what our focus group said and create a plan and move forward, and that's, that's what we did. But our community as a whole said, boy, that's too much. And so it, it failed, and it failed in a big way, and we were told pretty definitively, that's not the plan for you, you need a different one. And so we continue to have conversations. The reality is, there has to be a district commitment financially. There has to be. If we're getting things like a practice field, which by the way, you could also do for soccer and softball in that same space at the high school, so it wouldn't just serve football, it would serve multiple activities, PE, athletic development, soccer, softball, so pretty, pretty wide swath of kids we're talking about here. You can't do that and expect, you know, University of Jamestown to support it all in fundraising. Why would they, why would they be here looking for partners? You know, that's not how that works. It'd be nice, Dr. Peterson, if you can make that work, that's great. But that's not reality, right? There has to be a financial commitment from the district, and we just have to look at what we can support and what we can do. But getting back to my initial point, the community said, that building or that facility, it sounds great, but it's too much. This is about working as a partnership with another institution and fundraising, this is pretty much what people told us to do. This is, this is exactly what we heard to do. Why can't you fundraise some of it? Why can't you work with the University of Jamestown? I feel like a lot through this process, you know, just like anything, anytime you do something, you're making a risk of failing at it, right? That's okay, you know, the failing is okay. You know, the community has said, that's not what we want. Okay, we'll try something different. And so we continue to try something different. That's a really good opportunity to be different and work together, and do it in a much, much smaller price take. Regardless of what the district commitment is, it's a much, much smaller price take than what doing it on our own would have been, which is what people told us was a want and not a need. It doesn't take away the fact that this is a need for us. And this opportunity came when it came. Sometimes, you know, if a different opportunity came, we would probably prioritize that one. But this priority, or this opportunity, isn't going to be around a decade from now, and others might be. And sometimes you have to, you know, take advantage of the window when the window's open, and then the window's open.
Thank you. I apologize, I am having a technical glitch here. I have a notification on my Zoom that my speaker's not working. Roger, Greg, and Melissa, are you able to hear what's happening? Okay, thumbs up, great, then I'm just going to ignore the notification. My apologies. Do need to make sure we're still able to communicate with those online. Diane?
I just wanted to thank Dr. Peterson, because I feel like the train was pulling out of the station and we hopped on board. I really feel that way, and I'm glad you, that you saw, saw it as an opportunity for us as well. So thank you.
Are there any questions from my folks that are joining us via Zoom? Okay. Oh, Melissa? Okay, thank you, Melissa. I guess, I'm not sure if we can get any clarification of, so the, the playing facility with the locker rooms would be on the UJ campus, and then this practice would be on the Blue Jay campus? Okay. Pretty sure I caught that, but I just wanted to make sure I clarified it. Wonderful. Well, thank you. Oh, Heidi, sorry.
I appreciate the board allowing me to participate in the discussion and any voting on this, as I serve as a director there. But I will say, I also, Diane, I echo your comments. People did approach me and saying, two facilities right next door, you know, we need to work together. And I, I think we've seen great results of our community working together and collaborating. I remember about 10 years ago, there was a meeting right over here, there was a table right over there in this room, a lot of different entities coming together, talking about a wellness facility in our, in our community. And, and it took some time, and it took some work, and it evolved into what we call the track today. But there was a meeting, board members, as a school, a school board member, we were, we were sitting there, Bob, you, I believe you were, you were still here. And, and like I said, I still remember that meeting going, wow, this would be great, and what a great opportunity for our community. I see this as the same thing. We have entities working together, we're a smaller town, we need to work together, and that's what people have echoed on paper, in our, in our online surveys, in person. I think that this is an opportunity, I think timing, clearly, timing for us isn't always great when it comes to funds, but I think we also have to look at what opportunities we would miss out on if we don't prioritize this. Sally, I know, big job for you, but I don't, even with those same dollar amount, we're going to buy some plywood and some nails to board up some of the bad boards on the bleachers and on Ernie Gates Field. That's what I saw in the budget for the summer, some boards to pull off a few boards and replace a few boards. That's not a great facility. Lighting, Dr. Peterson, I appreciate you mentioning the lighting, because when I first came on the board, the first couple of years, I think it was $114,000, if I remember the number correctly, because it was shocking to me, I still remember, it was many years ago, just to repair some lighting in, at Ernie Gates. Anything we do to these facilities, there's a huge cost. And I think if there's a way where we can share these costs, I think it's a benefit to our community and our taxpayers. I think, I think we're, we're doing the right thing by, by in the long run benefiting our taxpayers. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or points of discussion? Thank you so much for joining us. We do appreciate your invitation and, and your hard work. As if anything has taught us the pandemic, is we must work as one, and what a fun topic to work as one with instead of a pandemic.
That's right.
Thank you.
Moving on, yeah, thank you.
All right. So as I mentioned at the, at the beginning of the meeting, I would like to go straight into the new business section of the building and grounds. May I have a motion to give direction to work with UJ as an ad hoc committee?
Mrs. Rogers, move that.
Roger Hout moves to, and Greg seconds, to continue the conversation and give direction to support a shared use facility with practice fields at Blue Jay Complex. Any discussion? Jason?
Tough, tough question, but is there any sort of timeline goals to have something accomplished?
Okay. Dr. Peterson might have a little bit of that.
Yeah, I can share with you, from the university's perspective, without a competitive track, that became, the, the timing became more necessary to, to make sure that we could provide a track by next summer. So our goal will be to break ground sometime this fall, we're hoping late fall when our season is over, maybe even a little bit sooner, depending on how the winter, how the fall goes, and then begin construction, reconstructing it in the summer, next summer. One of the things that Bob alluded to is the fact that a track right now, our track is regulation size, but it isn't the ideal size. A 400-meter track is a 400-meter track, but ours is long and narrow, and we need it to be wider. So we're going to be digging into the west side hill, and that, in order to get this project done, we need to do that this fall. So we'll be working on that this fall. We've been out fundraising, and we've raised a substantial amount of money towards this project already.
Jason, did you have a follow-up question?
Perhaps.
I can come back to you if you'd like.
When will we, as a board, be presented, like, with a number?
Let's, I think Dr. Leck can provide his comment on that.
So I think that's, there's an important question there for you, Jane, and an important one for us, too. And so my thought was that it would really be hard for us, again, without direction from the board, to say, this is something we support, or conceptually support. It's hard for us to go and make those commitments to look at what that would look like. So if the board supports that, we would look to bring back a budget, what, you know, what kind of creative solutions we can come to, and then craft a budget that includes a commitment to the University of Jamestown, as well as other clipping the peak projects that we know, if we have an opportunity, that we should address. We know that it's very difficult, for example, to look at the Guster Boiler Project. We only bring in the value, the value of 10 mils minus some other stuff that we already take out of there. And that project on its own is greater than what we generate annually for our building fund. So there are projects like that, that we really need to prioritize if we are going to take advantage and go down this road. That's what my budget would include, would be some projects, less, less for us to say, well, I think this project's more important than that one, but more to say, here's, here's what we should be looking at. And, and whatever I bring, as Bob talked about, and we talked about in our ad hoc committee, really has to include projects for the district facilities, as well as this opportunity to collaborate, because it is an opportunity that's available right now. So the budget has to include that, or the budget to this, you know, what we're talking about has to include that, but it has to include other things, other facility needs as well. The hope would be that we could do something at every level, something at the elementary level, something at the middle school level, and then the, the high school would see the advantage, of course, of the, the practice space there as well.
And for PE to have things to, okay, okay. Jason, follow-up?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm all for this. I just want to ensure that every step we take, we are also communicating with our community, because we will be the ones that could potentially have to go back for a referendum at some point. And I don't want the perception to be convoluted that the athletic complex is our priority over education. So I think, and I'm, I'm not sure what I, you know, that looks like, but I just want to make sure that every step along the way, we are informing, and we've done that. But I, at the end of the day, I don't want the perception to be that, you know, we had X number of dollars and we chose athletics.
Sure.
Is that fair?
It's fair to say, but I haven't seen any indication in my four years of being on the board that we've ever prioritized athletics over academics. It's, and it's an all-encompassing, and athletics are a part of academics. So I think it all has to be prioritized, and our boilers have to be prioritized, and they have been, and we will, and, so I haven't seen any indication, and so I don't think there will be, but...
And I, that's good, and I agree with you that we haven't, but I want to make sure the perception, and everybody has different perceptions, but I want us to, to, I guess, exhaust every effort we can to keep this transparent.
As we always do. Heidi?
Yep, and I agree with Jason, we just want to continue to communicate what our plan is and our intentions, and, and I think we've done a, a good job of, of that. Dr. Peterson, I'm not on, I don't work in your athletic department, is, is the track going to be below, like, the, the bleach, like, the seating, seating area, is that, is that the correct design of your, what your architects are coming up with?
Yeah, yeah. The bowl will just be sort of widened, and it'll get smaller this way, so it'll look like it's a little bit further north than it currently is, and then, you know, the track will be on the same level, the bleachers will be up, and then the inside will be turfed. A lot of people ask, you know, should it have been large enough for soccer to play? But the only way you can get soccer down there is for us to take the track out, and that just was not a good option at all. So, I mean, I suppose you could start digging on both sides of the hill, and, but that was enormously expensive. We have a turf football field, or turf field that supports soccer, we put lights in it a year ago to support evening games, which, again, the high school has participated in, and we didn't feel like that was good use of our resources.
Bob?
Just in, in getting back to Jason's comment, one of the things, I think I mentioned this earlier too, one of the things that really pleased me about, as we were having our discussions about dollars and the, the participation of Jamestown Public Schools in the, in this project, and when Dr. Leck started talking about financing and having dollars for it, he did specifically talk about that we can't just come up and say we're going to do the athletic facility, we have to do some things with our building. We can't go back to the public now and say, we've had all these discussions and needs and things, and they're not important, the athletic complex is more important. The, the plan that Dr. Leck and Sally will bring to us will include at least some things. We can't do everything, but it will include dollars, and it, who knows what the percentage would be, I'm not into that, but it will include dollars for projects across the district, and as Dr. Leck said, hopefully it would be at all levels, or it'll have to be prioritizing. But that is, that has been from the first moment that we had this conversation, that's been Dr. Leck's direction, so, and I really appreciate that.
Are there any questions from the individuals joining us through Zoom, Greg, Roger, or Melissa? Are there any more discussions here on the floor? Thank you for that very good discussion, everyone. So I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, well, I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Leck.
So my plan would be that Sally and I will craft a plan to bring back to you on our, in our July meeting.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thanks.
So moving on, and we're going to go back into reports, so in our regular meeting agenda, letter C, we're moving to number two, curriculum committee update and report. Mr. Haglund?
Okay, well, thank you for letting me share some things with you. Obviously, you're aware that the end of the school year finished up a little bit different than we had planned. With that being said, we had formed a couple of district committees, one for professional development and one for curriculum, that had planned on meeting throughout the year and come with some recommendations and plans and so forth at the end of the year. We got started on those things, but March sort of put us in, in a spin. So, so as I was putting together information, we really, at the end of the year, we didn't even have a chance to talk to teachers much about what plans were moving forward and, and the start of the school year next year, and all those types of things, largely because we don't know what that looks like for sure, but we still have to make plans. So as I was putting things together to share with the staff, I just decided that I would combine that and share with, with the board as well. I just decided that I would combine that and share with, with the board as well. So, I'll just go through and talk about things that have happened in both those areas, both the professional development and curriculum and just use that as a, as an update. As you know, we had purchased the, a, one of the big steps that we had made this spring was the adoption of an LMS, the Schoology LMS as a tool for helping us develop curriculum and do professional development with teachers, provide a repository for that type of work, curriculum work in the, in the professional development, but also then have a tool that allowed us to do a more efficient job of some of the distance learning activities that we were forced into this spring. So, we had the opportunity at the end of the year, that again, rolled out a lot different thing we had planned because of the, the situation with COVID-19. So, at the end of the year, we had some trainings, we did some trainings at different levels. We had three different trainings, one for elementary, a group of elementary teachers, one for a group of middle school teachers and one for a group of high school teachers. Where they, those training, those individual groups received some training from Schoology on the use of the, of the LMS and how it functions. Their model is that they train teams and then those teams train teachers within the district. So, we had, we wanted to start, we had to start with the elementary one to start there because a couple of our buildings were using that Schoology platform right away. It was their distance learning platform. So, we met with, with those, did that training at the end of, end of May here. Then at the beginning of June, we were given the go-ahead to start doing some in-person meetings, getting groups together to start to look at plans for next year and get some input from teachers and individuals face-to-face. So, that Schoology implementation team, we invited all the members that had received that training to become part of a, a team to craft the framework and the structure, the content that we would use to introduce Schoology to our teachers, to our students, to our parents and, and work on that with the goal of having that in place by the beginning of July so that we could offer some in-person training work sessions for teachers over the summer for those that were interested in participating in that and have that in place. And then those that weren't able to participate over the, in the, during the summer to have something in place for the back to school and beginning of the school year. So, that Schoology implementation team has met a couple of times already and started to work on crafting their message to teachers and the courses that they are laying out to try to facilitate that implementation of, of Schoology. So, they have met a couple of times, they have one more meeting next week. And then the plan is to start sending out information to teachers about the Schoology program, some videos on, on its use and then have some work sessions available for teachers to participate in during the month of July. So, that's where we are with the Schoology, the LMS. Our professional development committee has met. We had planned, we had developed a survey that we administered to all of our teachers with teachers, administrators and paraprofessionals in the district at the end of June, or excuse me, at the end of May. Again, we had hoped to do that in, in April, but delayed that until the end of May just because teachers had a lot of other things on their plates with the distance learning situation. We had, we were pretty pleased, we had 136 responses to that survey from, from all those stakeholders. We asked different, five different areas, what topics would be of most interest, most needed? What format would be preferred, the locations, timing and presenters? Just, you know, to get us, to help us understand what teachers and administrators, paraprofessionals would like in a professional development plan. Not surprisingly, the first, the, as far as topics go, the most requested topic on that was Schoology and the training for Schoology. We also had content area, specific trainings that were requested, just effective teaching practices where those are distance learning practices or classroom practices, technology, integration into the classroom. And then social, emotional learning was, those were the top five and all scored relatively close to each other as far as the returns from that survey. Most teachers wanted a hands-on experience with that, want that to happen within their buildings, either right before school started or during the school year. And they were preferred, you know, trained presenters and facilitators to conduct that training. So, our plan moving forward is to develop, is looking at, you know, just following that. We already have some things in place for doing the Schoology training. Well, another area is the, to continue our work with the striving readers and the closed reading grants. So, there's a lot of literacy work to be done. Social, emotional learning, I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a minute. And then the PLCs and utilizing the PLC process to further our curriculum and, and, and work on different areas there. The, the last one I wanted to talk a little bit about was the social, emotional learning. As we learned more about social, emotional learning these past year, a couple of years here, it became more obvious that we needed to do some more things with social, emotional learning. I think our distance learning experience and the, the COVID situation this spring just really emphasized that and, you know, magnified the need to do something with social, emotional learning. We'll be going into a situation fall of this year where some of our students, majority of our students will not have experienced a school or a classroom setting for at least five months, closer to six for, for some of them. And that's going to be a huge adjustment, a huge adjustment for students, for teachers. All those things that happened over the summer just had twice as long to happen now. So, getting things back into routines and getting everybody comfortable in school, feeling, you know, there's going to be a lot of anxiety between, you know, amongst teachers, amongst students. And our group just really felt that that was an important issue. So, we had our MTSSB, our multi-tiered systems of support behavior group meet this summer. Last week, we had all these groups meeting last week and start talking about plans for the fall and how we were going to address some of those issues. That group is meeting again. We're sending out some follow-up questionnaires to teachers to get some more input on their, what they, you know, see as urgent needs in those areas. But they will be meeting. Right now, they're spending a lot of time going through some resources that we had available that we've shared out with them, everything from videos from different social, emotional curriculums to just resources online that we've, that we've been given or that have been made available because of the COVID-19 situation. And vendors are all really happy to give you free stuff right now for a while. So, so those, those are the three things, three major areas are, are taking place right now. Like I said, we'll, we meet again the next couple of weeks with those groups and we hope to have some things happening with professional development and curriculum things put in place before, you know, by mid, mid-July. So, Dr. Leck also sent a copy of that report to you. So, there's a little bit more in, in the report, but just wanted to highlight that for you. So, any questions?
Thank you very much for that good report. And yes, we do understand things had to be flexible and change as all of us will just continue to be flexible and change. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Haglund? Heidi?
Thank you, Mr. Haglund, for your work. For our viewers in the public, will you just talk a little bit about, so Schoology is something that's new for us, a little bit, some, I think some teachers did use it a little bit. Maybe just talk a little bit about, this was a route we were going down anyway, I know.
Right.
But how important this could be in the fall, depending on how learning looks like in the fall? Maybe just for our public, explain that a little bit more.
Yep, actually, we had, we had started looking at, at an LMS, a learning management system in January, you know, early, earlier in the year, last year. We had a team, a task force put together through the, through our, through the school and through also through the Teacher Leadership Academy that looked at different learning management systems and made a recommendation to the board in February, I believe, or, you know, late February, that, to adopt the Schoology learning management system. And a learning management system just puts all the resources that teachers and students and parents can have under one umbrella. So, teachers will be able to, it synchronizes with PowerSchool. So, the grading piece, the, the assignments, all those things can be done in one place and it transfers, the information is transferred between Schoology and PowerSchool. And actually, while we're in the process of looking at learning management systems, School, or PowerSchool actually purchased Schoology. So, Schoology became part of PowerSchool, which is, is nice in that we're pretty confident that it'll develop with more interdependence between the two of them. But parents will be able to log in, students will get a login, parents will get a login, where they'll be able to get login and see, you know, assignments that are made that are, are more readily available. Everything's uploaded to the system. So, if teachers assign worksheets and things like that, if they assign text, they do videos, it's all stored in, in the learning management system. And teachers, students have access to that and they can access it at any time. So, when we get into a situation like we had this spring with the distance learning experience, the transition to that becomes much easier, much more seamless because students are familiar with that process in the classroom. They utilize the technology beforehand. So, now when they are at home and having to be in a situation where they don't have an instructor right in front of them, they can still access videos and all those types of different things. They can actually submit assignments online, whether that's taking pictures of it and sending teachers pictures, you know, just, there's a vast variety of how options to, to utilize that. So, it's, it's, like I said, it's, it'll make the, any future needs as far as distance learning much more user-friendly.
So, just, I'll give you a second. So, prior to us needing to do distance learning, we, we had the recommendation come to the board to look at adopting Schoology. Little did we know, when we approved that adoption, how much we would need an LMS going forward. And when we looked at that recommendation, it was more geared towards our higher levels of grades. You know, that recommendation was coming from the utilization from our high school classes, our middle school classes. And of course, now we had to use it in our elementary. So, my question is, outside of distance learning, how do you see our elementary teachers using Schoology?
But, you know, one of the things that will, you know, one of the things that will help us a lot is Schoology becomes a repository for all the curriculum work that we do and stuff. Right now, we do all the, the standards prioritization, all the, the different pieces of curriculum development that we do is housed in, on servers, in Google, in Office, OneNote, you know, just Microsoft Teams. It's, it's all over the place. And this platform brings all those things together. So, everybody has much more easy access to all that. And when working on professional development, professional learning committees or learning, professional learning committees, communities, our PLCs, they have access to, to those things. They can work. And, you know, one of the things that we, we really worked on and an advantage of a positive thing that came out of the distance learning experience was that we learned how to do some of that teamwork and some of that collaboration piece online. And this will even simplify that much more. One of the struggles we've had with our, especially at the elementary level is getting, bringing those people together to do that work. And now with the learning management system, the LMS, we're able to do that in, in a very easy manner. And we don't have, it doesn't involve having people to drive across town to meet at one building or another. They can work independently and, and then use other features like Zoom and, you know, and Google Classroom and stuff to communicate between each other.
I will say, I think that's probably something all of us in North Dakota will access more is the online meeting so that we don't have to travel across town all the time and utilizing some of those platforms. So, I guess there's some hidden positives. Jason?
And I was going to refer to the K-12 abilities of Schoology also. But one, when, when distance learning started happening and visiting with like coworkers and whatnot, that was one of the main feedbacks I got was, there were too many different platforms being used by different teachers, like if you had a... So, this will be awesome that, this will be very streamlined is a good word that you used for, hopefully, we don't have to face that again. But, but no, it, it'll be good. And I just wanted to make the comment that Schoology will help a stand, create a standard across the district that maybe some folks struggled with during the last few months of the year.
Diane?
Mr. Haglund, to switch gears, I wanted to ask about SEL. You mentioned the team has already met at least once and are preparing for this five-month gap of the, of the students being in the classroom. Will there, and I can work with Jennifer and Dr. Leck, but will there be an opportunity for us in late July or August to hear from that team on how they are going to lay things out for the fall?
Yep, as we, you know, and as a matter of fact, one of the things that, that I was working on was giving, getting information out to teachers and administrators and paraprofessionals, everyone in about some of the issues I just talked with you about. So, there was just an email sent out to all those people today as well that pretty much outlined everything that I just shared with you. And one of the things that's included in that is that, you know, we'll have updates on the progress of each of those committees as we, as they do, do their work. So, our hope is that we have something more to communicate, you know, on, you know, at least every other week. And like I said, there'll be something going out on Schoology next week on some of the training opportunities that are available there. But we'll also be bringing to the board, you know, information about what we're going to be doing with the SEL and, you know, the, you know, all aspects of it. Because the, the PD calendar is still, we're still working on that. One of the things that we've run into is that everybody's sort of put things on hold, you know. So, even some of our, some of our trainings that we, professional development activities that we had scheduled, presenters are saying, well, you know, we're not quite sure what the fall's going to look like. So, we're, we're not committing to doing things right now. So, we're, you know, we're just dealing with that as we come along. So, as we, no more, yep, we'll keep you informed.
Well, I think I, I would encourage you to take the opportunity to at least pencil them in virtually because that is probably going to be the new norm. And they need to start getting used to it.
We actually, we actually did. We finished up in, I think you, I think the board had seen a presentation from the coaches and so forth about some of the Steve Dunn writing instruction that we had... and so forth about some of the Steve Dunn writing instruction that we had, we'd done this year. Because of the COVID situation, our last session with, with Steve this spring was supposed to be in early April, and obviously, that couldn't take place. So, he, we worked with Mr. Dunn, and he agreed to do some virtual training. So, all of our kindergarten, first, second, and third grade teachers were, were able to take advantage of virtual training experience with, with Mr. Dunn. And it was the first time he had done that. We worked back and forth a little bit to make sure, to get things worked out. But, we're, you know, we're very pleased. We had the results, the, the feedback that we got from teachers and the surveys that we had done, they, they were all very, very pleased with the, with the experience. And when you're, at that time of the year, when you're telling, you know, a teacher that they're gonna spend between three and six hours in a Zoom PD session, you know, that, that wasn't the thing that they wanted to hear. But, it was, at the same time, when we got, when we did that, they were all very, very happy. So, it does show us we can do some things differently.
Very good. Any other question, oh, Dr. Leck?
I'll be very brief. Just the, the comment, just the reminder that the learning, the adoption of a learning management system was an aspect of our strategic plan that was approved last year. And that was, you know, really a starting point for us to have this conversation. I think very forward-thinking of the, of the, of that strategic planning committee and the board to adopt that idea. Not that we could have foreseen this, but I think it is the future of where we need to be. The second piece is related to Diane's question with SEL. And we can certainly provide some board education to help remind and update us as far as what's happening down that road. And I'll, I'll, we'll, I'll put that on my list of things to plan for.
Thank you, Dr. Leck. Any questions from Zoom? Thank you so much for joining us. It's nice to see you. Moving on into our agenda, we have the election report. Sally?
As you're aware, there was a school board election on June 9th that the county conducted with the other elections by mail and only. So, I'm just here to report the results of it. So, school board candidates that were elected are Roger Hout, Diane Hansen, Gail Nelson, and Aaron Roberts, Aaron Roberts. So, and that is the official result. Actually, about an hour ago, a couple, right before the meeting, I went out to the Settman County, and they have posted those as official results. So, a letter will go out to those candidates. And I, I do have the oath of offices ready, so, you know, within the next 10 days, those candidates need to, you know, take the oath of office, signed off, and stop in and see me. So, that's all I have.
And then they will join us at the July?
The July, they will take their seats. For the new ones, they will take their seats on the new business in the July board meeting. And I also want to say, you know, thanks, Jennifer. I enjoyed working with both you and Steve, so.
It's been a pleasure to serve. Steve? No? That would be out of character. Moving on, thank you for that. And congratulations and welcome to serving your public in an elected role for those that are new. It's, it's a wonderful experience. All right, moving on, superintendent's report. Dr. Leck?
Thank you. A lot of what I have is, in my written report will also be acted upon later with recommendations. I'm just gonna kind of go down the list with the Washington Elementary Principal recommendation. We will have a recommendation and an update furthered out on your agenda. One of the things that I will say is, I think that's important to recognize, is that there was a, a very quick turnaround from the date of posting to interviews, to selection of criteria, I should say, to selection of finalists, to interviews, to this point. When you have that short of a timeframe, you know, you don't get to do everything that you'd like to do in terms of communicating and notifying, because you don't know what's gonna happen. And, so, while we would have liked to have notified some people a little bit earlier in the process about where we were at in the process, you know, we just had notification right before the board meeting, and I'll make a recommendation on that individual a little bit later. But, so that's great news. But like I said, you know, the downside of this whole process being very quick is the communicating and the, you know, this is where we're at in the process. So, you know, the, the good news is, great candidate, you know, the not as good news is, it was a really short period of time. And like I said, we aren't able to notify those, those finalists or those other candidates in the, in the, in the capacity we probably would have liked to. But I want to talk a little bit about the process, and I'm not sure if Melissa's still on, and she could certainly add in anything that she wanted to. But, I really enjoy the process that we do, and I think a lot of the board that's sitting around has participated in how we conduct those interviews. And I, I think it's a very powerful experience, and I think it really helps us hone in on what we're looking for. And, so, one of those aspects is, of course, we look at the job description. Of course, we look at what I'm looking for in a building principal. But beyond that, we also sent a survey out to staff and parents. And from that, we look at big thing, we look thematically, we look at big rocks. What are, what are, what's our staff saying we need? Of course, we have a staff member serve on that committee. But beyond that, you know, we include the, the staff and, and parents as part of the, the survey process. And so, one of the, one of the things that came back are, are some different areas. We use, we infuse our, our interview process and the skills and attributes that we're looking for based on those surveys. For example, it was clear from the people that responded back, outside of, of course, the big rocks of instructional leadership, we wanted somebody that's really focused on collaboration, somebody that's a strong communicator. Another big topic that came from those surveys, for example, was working with special and diverse populations. That was a critical area as well. And then building and maintaining positive school and family culture. I think you heard too, when we had this discussion a few meetings ago, that was really one of the primary benefits of a, of a single-section facility, is having that ability to build a strong school and, and, and family culture. So, that was a priority area. And so, those were all components that became part of the skills and attributes of what we're looking for when we're interviewing, questions geared towards those areas, okay? And so, I feel really good about the fact that we found a candidate that does meet all of those criteria. And again, I'll, that's a recommendation we'll make later. But hot off the presses, this, the, the hire form that Sally did for me, I think still might be warm from the printer. So, it's, it's very, very new. We heard right before we came in that, that the person that we had offered to was willing to be a part of the Blue Jay family, which we're very excited about. And so, more on that later. Also, another area that we want to share more on, we talked before, one of the requirements to receive CARES dollars, those are the federal dollars through, with the pandemic funding, was the requirement to pay or negotiate and pay contractors. For us, the, that really means bus contractors. We don't own our own buses, we contract with Dietrichs. And so, we've been in negotiations with Dietrichs, and we've crunched a lot of numbers. And I, I know Sally spent an awful lot of time, did a fantastic job, I want to commend her for that, talking with other school districts that have already completed their, their contract negotiations, really working numbers hard. I've spent some time too, looking through those numbers, not as much as Sally has, but just making sure that when we make, when we have these negotiations, that we're being fair to everybody. We're being fair to the taxpayer, we're being fair to the contractor as required by CARES dollars. And I think that is a really important point, because people fairly ask the question, well, why are we paying for routes that were not driven? You know, why is that? Well, it's a requirement. We received, you know, $500-plus thousand, and part of that requirement was to pay for contractors. So, it's a requirement that we do it. And it's really coming down to what's fair compensation for those, for that company. At the end of the day, we looked at the fact that Dietrichs has a lot of different areas that they use to generate revenue for their company. There's still a business that has to, at the end of the day, continue to exist beyond this year. And so, they have overhead, and they have things that they have to spend, and, and dollars they need to commit to. So, some of the areas that they look at, they depend upon different overages that they might have. They depend on shuttles, they depend on routes, they depend on activities. So, there's a lot of different factors at play there. We felt that we shouldn't pay any overage, we shouldn't pay any shuttles, we shouldn't pay any activities, and we shouldn't pay for what was already provided through the PPP, Payroll Protection. So, essentially, what has been negotiated by Sally and Dietrichs is that we would pay 100% of those, 100% of those routes minus the PPP. So, what that equates to, and this is the recommendation we'll make later, is 104, or almost $105,000. It is important to note, and I will say, that if you look at what districts have paid across the state of North Dakota for their contracts, this compares really favorably. I think it's fair to our contractors, but it shows that we've been, that Sally's been stewards of tax dollars when we are looking at what needs to be paid. You know, we're, we're making a fair contribution to Dietrichs, but it isn't more than it should be. I think there's a lot of time that went into this process, and I just want to reinforce It is important to note that transportation funding is paid in the, you know, a year behind. So, we received transportation funding based on riders and miles last year. That also means my, miles and riders next year impacts our funding. So, we have to remember that we will receive about two-thirds less in transportation funding next year than we did this year. So, yes, there's some savings here, but you're gonna spend it next year. It's kind of, if you look at it as a two-year plan, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty much gonna be a wash. But it is important that we honor that contract as, as negotiated. And of course, that's pending board approval. But, but we do have a responsibility through CARES to, to honor that contract through negotiations. So, that's, that is that. We talked about our ad hoc committee already. Just want to make the, the board aware that we're having some drive-through immunization clinics. There's some information on there, and more information will be coming. Just again, another good partnership that we have with Central Valley Health, that's making those opportunities available in kind of a, an odd time for all of us. But it would very much appreciate, as we've already had the conversation with UJ and Strong Partnerships, that, you know, Central Valley Health, in a time of need here, in a time of crisis, has really shown what great partners mean, you know, when you run into emergency situations. So, I think that's another good example. The last item I have is vehicle purchasing. As you're already aware, you know, Sally created a 1920 budget executive summary that was discussed, the budget was approved in October 7th, 2019. One of the items that was included in there, or two of the items, were vehicles, one, a maintenance vehicle, and another vehicle to be used for professional development. Really, as we looked through this, and ultimately, the recommend, or the, the ask came from activities and from the high school related to if there was any possibility that those funds could be used, as the board is aware, we have the Blue Jay van that supports a couple different activities. It's, it's activities, but it's school curriculums, it's also work experience for students. A lot of different groups utilize that, that Blue Jay van. And I think there's an opportunity here as well to create some long-term savings. Mr. Gaylor did a nice job of creating a little analysis, a cost analysis, which is one of the things I requested of him when he was making this recommendation, to look at potential savings that could come from having another van available for not just professional development, but also for activities. Really good opportunities. I'd be happy to answer questions related to that, but the reality is, is you're talking significant savings almost right away from going down this road of having a vehicle. The maintenance would of course be, continue to be CTC as the other Blue Jay van is, and the, and the organization and administration of that would continue to be Mr. Gaylor and the high school. But, sometimes you, you have to put money up front to save money. And I think the payback on this is really pretty quick. But I know there's always questions about when we make purchases like this. It's important to remember, these are one-time purchases that long-term have a very positive payback to the district. And I think Mr. Gaylor's done a really, really nice job in that proposal of showing potential savings right away to be pretty substantial when you consider both, both vans that we have in place, that's pretty conservatively about $55,000. So, I think when you're looking at being stewards of tax dollars, as we say a lot, you know, certainly provides that opportunity. But that'll be coming up for action as well. But I would stand for questions on any of my reports if you had it, had any.
Any questions at this time for Dr. Leck regarding his report? Heidi?
I have a comment about the van. Can I do that now, or would you rather me wait till the motion?
Let's wait till the motion.
Okay.
Because we have to have a discussion on it then, if that's okay. All right. Anything else? Anybody from Zoom? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Leck. So, moving on in our agenda, we have nothing under board education, so, and nothing under old business, moving into, moving into new business. We have the activity vehicle purchase. Can I have a motion to approve the purchase of the activity vehicle? Motion by Roger, seconded by Steve. Heidi, would you like to start our discussion?
I just want to comment, I appreciate the spreadsheet that Mr. Gaylor put together, because the last time we bought a van, I fielded quite a few questions and, and comments and those kinds of things. And I think that, and I think, and they were good questions, because yes, we are spending money upfront. So, I do appreciate that spreadsheet that I can use for, for reference if we get more questions. But I, I will say that I did field quite a few questions from, from public and otherwise about that, so.
Yes, I, I as well fielded quite a few questions regarding vehicle purchases by the district, because it's something that historically we hadn't really done, and we really just relied on our contract with the bus service to do that. And so, just the purchase of the first vehicle that's up at the high school, and, and we already saw in the first year, $20,000 savings to the district, correct me if I'm wrong, with the first purchase. And so, then now with the second, with the breakdown, and I, I would like to, for the record, go ahead and speak to it exactly, but I'm not finding it on my agenda just yet. But while I'm looking for it, Dr. Leck?
I think too, you, I, I 100% understand what both Dr. Larson and Mrs. Schmidt are saying related to purchase of a van. And I do think it's important to continue to come back to that long-term savings, because really, you're spending a little bit of money, but you're saving money in the long term. It is far cheaper to, to take activity vans that we own and pay for fuel and maintenance costs instead of renting vans, which we actually still end up doing, even now with an activity van, because there is demand for them. Instead, and certainly instead of using a bus contractor. It's far, far cheaper. And if we can send a van or two vans instead of contracting for bus service, that is much cheaper for the district, and again, a long-term savings. And, and I'm sure people just don't realize how much that van gets used, and that when we're talking about, well, we're buying a Blue Jay van, our, our thoughts go to, well, because we're sending teachers over to Fargo for professional development. Well, that might be one part of it. But we also are using transit, or have used transit to provide work experience for, for some of our special needs students, for example. Well, that's about $2,000 a year that we spend just on that, just in transit, if we don't have the average, you know, if we don't have the current Blue Jay van. So, you start throwing all of these opportunities in, in place, it absolutely does create savings. But I understand the question, well, why are we doing that instead of this? But the reality is, you spend the money so you can save the money, and then allocate it where you need to, when the time is right to do that. But, but I don't think it's a question that there will be savings.
Yes, and I was able to find the report that Mr. Gaylor worked up to show evidence that purchasing in this vehicle does save the district. And he has, over the course of five years, saving over $55,000 to the district of the purchasing of, of a second van. And anytime we can do better with our taxpayer dollars, that is something I'm definitely in favor of. Jason, did you have a comment?
My only question then is, what is?
My only question then is, what is the projected usable life of a van such as this? Will it outlive its savings, or will we be just purchasing new vans with what we've saved?
You know, Mr. Gaylor did even provide a depreciation value on his report. So I'm assuming with that depreciation value, a decision could be made at that point of trading it in or keeping it. Dr. Leck?
And that, that was linked in my report, which I'm assuming that you've looked at already. But were there questions about that at all?
No.
Any questions from Zoom? All right. If you'd unmute your mics on Zoom, please. All those in favor, oh, I'm sorry, Jason?
I just have one more question. The CTC doing the maintenance, there's no, we're good with liability and, and stuff there?
Okay.
Thank you, Jason. Any other discussion? Oh, Heidi?
Just to follow, I'm sure, I'm assuming the work at the CTC is also supervised by the instructor and so forth.
And that's why we're okay, Mr. Hall is, is certified.
Very good. And what an experience taking care of our property. Very good. Okay. All those in favors, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We've already done letter, number two, so moving on, we have nothing under Curriculum Assessment and Instruction, so we'll move into Finance. Can I have a motion to approve the draft 2020-2021 budgets? Motion by Bob. Second by Diane. Sally, can you provide us a little commentary?
Sure. You see, the first, I sent all the budgets to you, and the first one that I'll just highlight is the General Fund Budget, which is draft. You know, in the revenue portion, the local dollars, the majority of that is your, you know, taxes that are levied from the county. And projecting about a 5% increase, obviously, I don't have that, you know, exact number yet from the county, but projecting in that revenue, a 5% increase. The state dollars is what, the number that we currently have to work with, estimating for, you know, the tuition for next year from the state. And our federal dollars, that is currently, you know, last year's numbers. You know, still working on a draft budget. We still have a second striving readers grant to get in there and finalize those federal budgets and, and see what the carryover is from this year. So the federal dollars, you know, will change, you know, when I present the final budget. Hopefully be able to do that in July. We also have the CARES dollars that we just received the approval of, so that number will be added to the budget, too. So just to let you know that, you know, those numbers, it's a draft, will be, you know, added to, but give you some kind of perception of what those revenue dollars, where they flow into. And obviously, the expenditures, you know, salary and benefits are, you know, pretty solid. We do have, obviously, a higher tonight that, you know, kind of changes that. But that's all your, all your staff members' salaries and, you know, the benefits listed in that 100 and 200 category. So that's pretty final. The 300 category is your services, professional services, when we have a presenter in, you know, legal services, and our cooperative agreement working with James River. And those salaries are just finalized, so that number will change a little bit also. And then the 400, which is, you know, maintenance items, repairs, you know, water bills, that type of thing. And then the 500 is our communication, whether it be internet or postage, you know, telephone, those type of services. And our 600 is just supplies and, supplies and electricity, you know, just some different things in there, textbooks. 700 is the equipment, any kind of equipment, whether it be furniture, technology, you know, vehicles. And then our other objects in the 800s is our dues and fees, license that we pay. Those items are budgeted accordingly. And then other use of funds in that would be transfers, you know, transfers to the Activity Fund. That's one item. And the other item in that 900s is maybe unallocated. Maybe we don't have a plan yet for a federal dollar, so we just unallocate it until we determine how we want to spend it, and we bring that back to the board at a later date. So currently with this draft budget, you know, total revenue of $31,167, $354 revenue, and the expenditures are $30,968, $932. So right now, positive balance of $198,000. Dr. Leck alluded to earlier that, you know, the transportation, obviously, we're going to have a lower transportation revenue, and that is impacted, that is reflected in this budget. Okay? The Special Reserve Budget, the district no longer has it for many, many years, mill levied for the Special Reserve. And so this is just 50% of put in the budget for an expenditure. It would be a resolution needed if the, the board would decide that they would want to transfer money from this fund to the General Fund. This is just a budget in place that if the board would choose to do that, they would, would be able to do that. By a resolution, obviously. The Building Fund Budget is just reflective of what Dr. Leck in March or April presented. The maintenance, which the large, obviously, the largest portion is the Lincoln Boiler, which we, you know, you've approved those. And some Univans in the middle school and a couple of other things that were listed in that already approved summer project listing from the district. And obviously, insurance and a couple of other things that are in here. So again, projecting, you know, for those 10 mills, the 5% increase. So projected revenue of $809 and current projected expenditures for next year of $791,000. Our Debt Service Budget actually, you know, is just transferring funds from the, you know, from General Fund to pay for debt and, and also the Building Fund to pay that debt. So that's just funds transferred from a different, different fund to pay for those bills. The Food Service Budget, which Shelley Mack, our Food Service Director, puts together. And on a side note, our new Service Director, Food Service Director started today. So I think he's overwhelmed right now, but Shelley's very pleased. So every minute of Shelley's time is going to be spent with him this week, so. But those are, again, staff salaries and benefits and the purchases of food and equipment that Shelley has put together. So you, and we will need to, obviously, like the board has, is aware of the district. You know, the Food Service Budget is not going to, without any money coming in this year. And so in order to even cover payroll in June, we will have to transfer money over to help support that Food Service Budget. The Activities, currently, Mr. Olson and I just finalized the budget. So this is actually last year's budget. When you see in July, it will be similar, it'll be in different categories. But we tried to keep the budget, you know, pretty close to what it was last year. But at this point, it is draft, and it reflects last year's budget. And about, you know, this is includes also, remember, includes middle school, and includes revolving accounts, and it includes the activities and athletics in this budget. So it's a million, $1,030,700 for the expenses and $846,000 in revenue. The Health Insurance Budget, currently, we have a meeting scheduled on June 22nd to meet with our consultants and determine what our plan should look like and determine rates. So this budget is last year's budget because I did not have the information to give you a updated amount on what the plan is going to be. Obviously, the revenue has been determined by our negotiations of 2.5, so that will stay the same on the revenue side. But the rest of it on the expenditure side, we'll, you know, we will see what happens. And then the CT, James Valley Career and Technology Center Budget. Mr. Gaylor is doing a phenomenal job, and him and I worked on this together. So you can see the revenue local, which is the tuition from the schools to the CTC. And then state dollars they receive from the programming. And then the federal dollars, which for them is Carl Perkins. So a total of one point, a little over 1.1, almost $1.2 million in revenue. And similar to the General Fund Budget, you have salaries and benefits. And purchase services, you can read those. I won't read them each individually, but expenditure ballot, expenditures of $1.2 million. And that's a brief highlight of all the budgets. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Sally. Are there any questions regarding the draft budget? Dr. Leck?
Just a brief comment. I want to recognize Adam, Mr. Gaylor, and Sally. Really maximizing the availability of CTE funding and just making sure that we are getting reimbursed for everything that we can. They've done really an excellent job in finding a couple of areas that we could either restructure or that we haven't been taking advantage of, that we probably should have been. And so, you know, a lot of kudos to those individuals. I don't want to leave out Mr. Heinert either. And just making sure that we are getting, maximizing CTE funding to the best that we can. They've done a really, really nice job.
That's very good to hear. Are there any questions or comments on Zoom? Diane?
I didn't see it on here. It probably is. What is our total from CARES?
It's $568,130.
And, oh, Dr. Leck?
Sorry, but then we have to subtract the equitable services that, that we give to St. John's and Ann Carlson. So I think the, the total district is closer to 513.
Yes. Like what they did, what the government did to distribute the CARES dollars, ESTR funds, they've got a couple of different names, was use the Title I formula and process to get the money out there. But then the rest gets, you know, St. John's can choose to spend it on whatever follows under the ESTR guidelines, and so can the two, the two private schools that decided, decided to apply for the ESTR funds were Ann Carlson and St. John's. So they are spending their dollars different ways. I, you know, they are choosing to do some, St. John's is doing professional development and some cleaning supplies. And Ann Carlson is doing some professional development.
Steve?
These various budgets that are in the red a little bit, where does, what pocket does that come out of then?
They will use the ending fund balance. There's always a reserve, the revenue minus expenditures. So what's left over, they will use that.
So currently, our budget is on the positive side, which is very good to see with the uncertainties that we are heading into, which, with the next budget cycle, it's very important that we're not largely deficit spending. It's also very important that Sally worked really hard with the bus contract to make sure that it was fair to both sides. And we do appreciate you keeping the taxpayer dollars in mind, but also supporting our contractors because we need them. The, the story is, is we need them. So thank you for working hard on that, and thank you to everybody that worked on these drafts. I'm pleased to see that we're not deficit spending. Is there any other discussion or comments? Heidi?
I just have a question, and a comment. The Boiler Project, is that, did that get completed? Because that was the Boiler Project, did that get completed?
It's currently, I mean, you know, we, we approved the budget. It's getting, they're just starting asbestos removal. And so it will be done this summer and will be completed by early September.
All right, thank you. I just didn't know if there was any delays due to the situation that we're in. And then secondly, can we put on our, maybe put on our agenda for our retreat, since we're going to have new board members, that we can just have a budget tutorial on what the different aspects of the budget are and the money that's already spoken for?
Dr. Leck?
Just looking to clarify, my intention would be to have a finance retreat similar to what we had a couple of years ago, when we had new board members on breaking down the budget. And I know that's dry, and I know that's hard to sit through. But it's an important piece of the process of understanding the totality of a budget and how it works. That would be my intention, unless the board would like to do something different. Especially having new board members on, to see the scope and the context, I think, is really important. But that's what I would intend to do, even though I get, it's a, it's tough to get through.
Any other discussion on the draft budget? All right. If you would please unmute your mics on Zoom. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Letter B, can I have a motion to approve the textbook purchases for 2020-2021? Motion by Roger. Second by Jason. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Letter C is the General Fund Balance Sheet. That is there for our information. Are there any questions? Or Sally, would you like to provide any discussion?
Yes, if you noticed, typically at this time of year, because we get all the, the revenue from the state, you know, and so our revenue, less expenditures is higher this time of year until we spend, you know, spend the salaries in June, and we expense out the contracts for those staff that collect their checks over 12 months, and we expense it out, so it's on the books for June. So you see it all, even though we pay it out in July, June, July, and August. Typically, as an example, the fund balance, you know, the difference, previous year comparison, if you were to look at last year's, it would have been a positive balance of revenue over expenditures of about $213,000, okay? This year with COVID and everything, it's $458,000. So if you look at that, and you go, whoa, wait a minute here, you know? Just to explain a little bit so you can see, you know, why the difference is. Obviously, in the 100s and the 200s, your salaries, okay? We did not pay any substitutes, whether it was substitute teachers, substitute office staff, paraeducators, those type of, you know, salaries and benefits. So the salaries is like $106,000, and the benefits of about $8,000.
And Sally, just a point of addition to that, too. If we had open positions, we didn't hire for obvious reasons.
Right.
Support staff positions that weren't, that we didn't have billed, we weren't seeking out to build, and we were using.
And I just took a, you know, I looked at what we had, you know, spent during that time last year and compared it to this year, but yeah, Dr. Leck is actually, you know, correct because we did not, we were not in the process of reaching out and hiring and adding staff during that time. Also, the School Resource Officer, you know, comparing last year to this year. So that was another $35,000 that we did not spend this year. And then the transportation, which if you approve, you know, that's $104,000 that we would have been paying each of these months, you know, months, March, April, and May. So that's a total of $254,000. And last year, you know, the difference between last year and what we are right now is 240, 245, and those expenditures add up to 254. So pretty, kind of explains why, you know, why there is such a large increase, just to, just to explain that in case anybody had any questions.
Thank you, Sally. Any questions? Moving on, can I have a motion to approve the monthly financials? Motion by Jason, second by Heidi. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number five, personnel. We have the Washington Elementary Principal Update and Recommendation. Dr. Leck?
So thank you. The, as I shared with the board earlier, really until we, right before we got to this meeting, we weren't sure if we were going to be just sharing an update or, and then delaying this conversation to, to a special meeting later this month. But I'm happy to say that we did get, had, we had an offer and a, you know, obviously pending board approval to an individual, Jennifer. board approval to an individual, Jennifer Young. Jennifer was a classroom teacher in kindergarten and third grade at Dickinson Public Schools, like I said, for 15 years, made the transition to a school counselor, received her master's degree in counseling, and then also took ed leadership classes to receive her elementary principal credential, worked as a counselor for five years in a small district, Richardson Taylor, and also then served for two years as the elementary principal at Richardson Taylor. I talked about the process that we used to really hone in on what we were looking for, that we're making sure that a recommendation is the right fit, it's the right person in place. And I really feel Mrs. Young checks the box, checks all of those boxes and will be an excellent fit, I think, at Washington Elementary. So I'm very, very pleased to be able to share this personnel hiring form with the board. And I, she has two years of experience. So based on the administrative negotiated agreement, that is $103,261, serving as Washington Elementary Principal.
Melissa, did you have anything to add to Dr. Leck?
I'm, can you hear me? I'm in my car. So just very, very impressed with Jennifer and her vast experience that she has. And it really kind of covers all the bases of, you know, being counselor, being a teacher, having principal experience as well. And I think she's just going to be a perfect fit for Washington and meet all the needs of that school. And she'll also, she's a real multitasker. I mean, she was turning in dissertation stuff on her way to, to the interview, I guess she said. And so I think she'll be able to also fill in in those areas of need in the district. So I'm very, very pleased that she, that she said yes. And just really excited for the district to be able to gain, gain her experience and her knowledge. And she's a great collaborator and it's going to be fantastic for the district. I'm really excited.
Thank you, Melissa. I don't know if you get much more of a glorying recommendation than perfect fit. Dr. Leck?
You know, one comment that I wanted to make that I neglected to, we conducted an exit interview, that's myself and the finalist candidates. And one of the questions that I always ask, and I actually stole this from one of our other administrators, I think it's a great question, but I always ask, we're looking for somebody that makes us better. And why do you make us better? And the reality is, is we don't have an administrator that has her type of experience. We just don't. And I don't mean that in terms of years of administrative experience. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about somebody that has that counseling background, understand, that makes us better. Because we don't have anybody that has that, that experience. She is going to be a real great resource for us in terms of all the areas we've talked about, social, emotional, learning. We know from talking with, from the surveys, that that's a key area for our Washington people, too. They want to have somebody that can connect and that can address, you know, various needs of students. And she absolutely does that. So like I said, I thought she was a great candidate and 100% makes us better.
Can I have a motion to approve the hiring of Jennifer Young at a salary of, it's not on here, $1,300, $103,261? Thank you, Greg. Seconded by Jason. Any, any further discussion? Jason?
Well, she sounds like she comes highly qualified and I just, to me, her highest quality is that she's from Western North Dakota, so she must be someone of great character. So Dr. Leck, and you know, we talked a lot about the portfolio for now, principals, and I mean, we don't need to divulge that information here. So you see her experience as possibly also fitting though the ESL? Or we're not sure yet?
Well, there's opportunities throughout the district that, you know, you know, being the administrative representative on the MTSSB, that MTSS Behavior Committee, that's going to be crucially important. We know, once we have a hire, we're going to start to look at all of those and determine what is the best, you know, organization of all of those extra duties. But I would definitely see the SEL and the MTSSB as an area right in her wheelhouse with her experience, you know, not just as a classroom teacher, but that counseling experience as well.
Any other questions or discussions? Greg?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, just hearing this information about this person, I think it's awesome. And I just want to thank the team that actually did the interview and came down to the selection in such a short period of time. It seems like you've hit a home run here and we're looking forward to having her join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And I think as Dr. Leck alluded to those other candidates that applied and interviewed for the job, we do thank you. And I'm sure you are a wonderful candidate. And we hope you'll consider working for our district again in the future when we have an opening. And we would have liked to extend an acknowledgement of your efforts for interviewing more timely. But due to the time crunch that we were on and wanting to extend this contract to Mrs. Young, we weren't quite able to communicate that the way we would prefer.
And even the other candidates that applied?
And the other candidates that applied, yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Welcome to the district. And moving on into policies and procedures, can I have a motion to approve the first reading of the prohibition on aiding sexual abuse A, B, C, E policy? Motion by Bob. Seconded by Steve. Any discussion? Greg?
Yeah, this, now, this policy is brand new, not replacing a policy. We hadn't had one like this before. Is that correct?
Correct. It's a requirement by ESA to have this policy. And so it is a recommended policy through School Boards Association. We just made the change to list specifically that it comes from ESA as a requirement.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on into our agenda to tuition, can I have a motion to approve the tuition agreement for a seventh grade Montpelier student to attend Jamestown Public Schools for the 2020-2021 school year? Motion by Roger. Seconded by Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to other, can I have a motion to approve the long-range planning report? Motion by Roger. Seconded by Greg. Dr. Leck?
I know this is a, already been a long meeting, but, but I think it is important that we walk through what the report says publicly, you know, and so I would like to walk through each of these areas as well as the feedback that was provided through survey. So I'll be very quickly, I'll be quick, certainly ask questions if you have any in each of their areas. On page three of 20, you'll see what the state level, the legal requirements for to complete this. I did reference the fact that we actually conduct an annual superintendent report. So a lot of this comes from there. If you'll notice through the different hyperlinks that I've included in this, that was also sent out in the survey, a lot of different appendices trying to help people dig deeper if they wanted to dig deeper, or at least see where we got that information from. And that includes the most recent superintendent report. And then I also included the Insights, which is, the Insights webpage, which is a great resource for those that want to know a little bit more about the district. I'd encourage people to look, everything from attendance and enrollment to test scores and lots of different, lots of graduation rates, lots of different information. I think it's a great resource. So all of this information really came from a report that we do every year, even though it's not required, and the Insights. The next page four is simply restatement of our, and the whole strategic plan can be found in Appendix B, but this is just a simple, simplified version of our mission vision and the strategic focus for the district. And the enrollment trends came from Appendix C, which was a study we did through RSP and Associates a number of years ago. Really what it shows is for the most part, consistent enrollment, although I will say we have a big bubble coming at the middle level. Some of our largest groups are at the middle level. And, you know, at some point, when you know you have a funding mechanism that is highly based on enrollment, when that bubble comes through the high school, if it's not filled, that means that there's going to be a funding gap that you need to be aware of. And I just, I'm pointing it out just to be, just for awareness. Right now, we're maximizing staff the best that we can. But as you lose students, you lose funding. And I know Mr. Feldkamp had a question.
Where can the public access this report?
So this, this report was provided through email and app notification. And as soon as it's approved at this board, it'll be on our district website. And then hard copies can be available as well. The reason we have to send it again, or post it again, is because of the feedback. You know, we compiled the feedback, I compiled the feedback and made some recommendations as well. So those are enrollment trends. Really, the news is fairly consistent. But again, we have that bubble of kids coming at, that are currently at the middle level, that eventually will graduate and will, will see a decline likely after that, after that bubble bursts. In terms of page six and seven, those are student assessment data pages. What it shows you very simply, one point I'll make first is that we didn't have a Spring of 2020 test because of COVID. So the assessments were, were not issued for the most part. But what it does show you, if you look across the board, D is the district, S is the state, compare very, very favorably in almost every area compared to where the state average is. The average always matters more to me than, than a percentage score. The bar's always rising. You know, if, if we just looked at, if we just set a standard and never changed it, never increased it, it wouldn't be as hard to achieve. You know, we should always be moving the bar up. So I don't get worried about 58%, 46% or whatever that is. I look at more than that. How do we compare to the state average? And what are we doing over time? That matters much more, more to me than just the numeric value. But in any case, it shows that we perform very well in ELA and math and in science compared to the state average. If you look at NAEP, you'll see pretty consistent results as well. ACT and work keys. One of the things I'll point out, I know I've shared this with the board before, but one of the things that is important to recognize when we're looking at ACT, it's not represented in here because this is a state average and a district average. North Dakota is one of the states that requires every student to take the ACT. In some states, they don't. They require, it's just an option. And so when you're doing a comparison, it's important to know, is this a state that, you know, you could have a state average that's 21 or 22, but they're only using a select group of people. And that looks different, you know, if you look at across the state. So if you look at a national average, or if you look at historically in Jamestown, maybe what we, you know, what our state average was 15 years ago, it might be different. It might be higher because we were only taking a sample size of some kids. Now we're taking a sample size of all kids. And so I do think that that's an important differentiation to make. If you look into, starting on page eight, and then following into nine, if you remember a few years ago, in 2017, we did our five-year advanced ed accreditation review, that's Appendix D. And I'll just point out one of the powerful practices. I really appreciate the board for this. When I first came on board in Jamestown, if you remember, there's three levels, powerful practices, opportunities for improvement, and improvement priorities. Improvement priorities are the thou shalt do's. Improvement priorities are the ones that are saying, you are deficient in this area. You need to be better. Improvement priorities are kind of like, hey, these are things you can work on. And powerful practices are, these are the things you need to continue to do because you do them really well. When I first came, you had just completed an advanced ed review, and an improvement priority was governance of the school board. That was an improvement priority, saying, you need to do better. Not a, hey, here's a good idea, maybe work on this. It was a thou shalt do better here. You are hurting your district. In five short years, that changed from an improvement priority to a powerful practice. That's not easy to make two-level jumps. But, but the team here recognized the work that you have done as a board, recognizing the work that you do, how you do your work, that you're prepared, that you're looking after the district, that you're caretakers, all been, and that you're growth oriented, all very important aspects. So I want to give you credit for that. A lot of different powerful practices and improvement, and opportunities for improvement, but I wanted to point that out as well. Certainly things we can do better. There's always things we can do better and want to do better, but I want to point that out as well. If you look at Appendix E, that is all of the different courses that we offer, six through 12, including advanced placement and dual credit opportunities. A lot of curriculum and extracurricular opportunities for students in Jamestown. And that's represented from page nine all the way through, let's see, page 12, play page 13. So lots of different information in there that I think is important. It references that we do have a school resource officer, recognition that we received two grants in the last couple of years for striving readers to improve literacy comprehension across the community, which we know is a huge issue, and that we want to continue to address and be better. So those are those two grants. We do have interventions related to MTSS, multi-tiered system of supports. And I also referenced the number of students requiring a repeat of a grade. Typically speaking, that's kindergarten, although that's not always the case, but generally speaking, it is, that we are really working hard at the dropout rate. That is not an easy number to change over time. But it is, quickly, it's something that you change over time systemically. I think MTSS is a key piece of that. I think SARB is a huge piece of that, along with the attendance rate. And I think a lot of great work has been done with SARB in improving attendance. It's really been a priority across the district. Our counselors do a great job, working with Mr. Stillwell, who leads that committee, in doing a better, better job every year related to attendance. Suspensions and expulsions, student success indicators, that's one of the responsibilities now with ESA as a state requirement. And you can see the senior survey on post-secondary plans as well, stating that a large percentage of our students are pursuing some opportunity post-secondary as well, which I think is an important indicator as well. So that covers academic and extracurricular. Page 14 and 15 cover our general fund expenditures, revenues, and balances. As you can see in there, and I think what isn't represented is a year or two before that, there was even a greater level of deficit spending. And so over time, the district has, I think, done a good job, from my perspective, done a good job of managing that deficit over a period of time, rather than addressing, it's very easy to cut money from budget, their numbers, but their people. And doing it over time to making sure that we're making the right decisions over time, instead of just cutting to a budget number. And I think that's been really important. But we got there. You know, if you look at 2017, 18, the first year in a number of years in which we have actually had a positive balance, which is great news. And you heard news similar that Sally presented earlier and for our next budget, because times are going to get leaner. They're going to get a lot tougher based on what's happening or what's likely to happen at the legislative level. Our expenditures per pupil over the last couple of years have stayed relatively consistent. I think that's good news, that we're being as efficient as we can. Our mill levies during that same time have been consistent. Our mill levies during that same time have been consistent, staying at 100, around about 100. In terms of staffing, that is projected, or at least we are projecting it, to stay the same in almost every level. We don't see big changes projected there in instructional staff, support staff, or administrative staff. We're seeing that likely to stay the same. We also included facility planning. That includes all of our buildings, what their square footage, their capacity, their enrollment, and their percentage of that enrollment, based on what we have currently. So what's the outcome of this? So we did, as was referenced earlier, send out a survey. And staff, whether that's teacher, administrator, support staff, board members, students, parents, board, community members, all provided perspective, 75 people. And so what I did is I took that and I tried to look at it from a granular level, but thematically say, what did this, you know, what were the responses in all of these different areas? In academic and extracurricular programs, it was very, very obvious from the responses that people appreciate. And of course, there's always different perspectives, you know, but for the most part, people said, boy, we have strong academic standards, a lot of opportunities for students in academics and extracurriculars. A lot of opportunities. Really, in a school our size, we have as many extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities in many of the same classes that schools twice our size have. Now, that comes with a cost, of course, because we don't have the efficiency that a larger district does. But we provide them because we feel like they're important and we've made that financial commitment to them. So what I'm saying is I think our families appreciate that we have programs like Talented and Gifted, Dual Credit, STEM Activities, Advanced Placement, and all of the activities that we do have. It creates a different challenge to have them, but our community appreciates and supports it. In terms of areas of potential development targeted in academic and extracurricular programs, a lot of different opinions about extracurriculars, but most felt they were appropriate. But some felt that they weren't adequate, and some felt like there weren't enough, some felt like there were too many. And it really ran the gamut, although I would say the vast majority felt it was right, that we were happy that we were providing those opportunities, although others felt differently really across that board. Other recommendations that came through included taking advantage of pre-K. Of course, that would have a cost that the district would need to commit to. More electives at the middle level, one-to-one technology came across a few different times. And even more opportunities for AP and dual credit came through as potential areas for potential development. My recommendation, and this is new, in the past, I've just done areas of strength and areas for potential development. I thought as I've continued to do this, I think it's important that I provide you some recommendations as a board and what I see. And so one of those recommendations, or the recommendation in academic and extracurricular, I think you need to continue to review and revise. We have looked at all of these areas and trying to make the best choices we can. We can't do everything, but we need to continue to look and grow and recognize, boy, is it time to go one-to-one? Or is it time to add another level of tag? Is it time to add more AP and dual credit? We do do that, but we need to continue to do it, and we need to continue to grow and not operate with the status quo. In terms of instructional and administrative staffing, this is another one of those that ran the gamut of different respondents, but all areas of employment classifications were referenced specifically as terms of strength. From our teachers to our support staff, to our coaches, to our administrators, everybody in some form or another was recognized as saying, these people are doing great jobs. And that's really heartening. You know, that says to me, our community appreciates the work that we do. They appreciate the work of our educators and those that support the work in the classroom. And it shows that those people are working hard, and we appreciate them very much. Specifically referenced caring attitudes, creating positive connections with students, areas of strong communication, a commitment to academics, and well-educated staff. So again, all the things you really want to hear, the things that we've been working on. And so that was very positive. And the district's response to the pandemic and distance learning was also categorized as a strength. And I think we can understand the recency of that. In terms of areas for potential development, the respondents, again, this happened across the board, referenced staff be fairly compensated to ensure retention of high-quality staff and the ability to recruit new staff. I don't think that's a surprise by the board. I know that you have continued to try and find the best way to do that as well. Communication at all levels, classroom to home, building to home, office, district office to home, all of those in some capacity or another were referenced as things that we can do better. And for the most part, that was utilizing our existing communication tools better. Some people said that was too much. Some people said it was not enough. But again, you try to find the balance of assessing what you do and the ways that you communicate. And at the end of the day, we still need to continue to do better in that area. And then the ability and the support to work with varied levels of students. We know our students, the situations, the environments they come from is changing. We have much more trauma than we ever have. We've had varying levels of poverty. The gap is getting bigger between those that have and those that don't. We need to address those, continue to address those, and that diversity in the students with special needs and those with behavioral challenge. That was also referenced as an area that we need to continue to prioritize and get better. So in terms of recommendations, one of the things that I've been thinking a lot about is the ability, like I said, the community very clearly recognizes what we have in terms of our staff across the level, across all levels, employment classifications. They also don't want to see, they want to make sure that everybody's treated fairly. They want to make sure that everybody is compensated to the best of their ability, right? I think there's an opportunity here. I think one of the things that I would recommend that the board do is to set really clear goals about all the employment classifications and communicate that across the employment classifications, so everybody knows what your goal is. Then it doesn't become a, this group got this, and this group got this, and this group got this. Or it becomes a, well, we negotiated last, so we got what was left over. And we know that isn't what's happening, but you understand why people have those feelings as well. But if you set goals, and it doesn't matter what that goal is. It could be, we want a base salary to average this. It can be, we want to start here and have a maximum salary of this. It can be, we want to increase by the cost of living for support. It doesn't matter what the goal is. The point is that you want to create a goal that people can tangibly understand of where you're going. So the community understands where you're going. So as a board, you can communicate at the table to those that you negotiate with or those that you are, like support staff, informing where their salary, that people can understand, that's why this group was here. That's why this group was here. You're closer to this goal than they are to their goal. And it's not going to take away the sting of the differences in negotiations, but it helps to communicate. And I continue to think that that's where the breakdown happens, is if you can examine the pay structures and say, this is our goal, this is where we're trying to get to, that becomes easier to understand. We don't need hard feelings. You know, everybody's really important to our district. And I don't care if you are an hourly person that's new to the district, if you're an administrator that's been here for 15 years, if you are a teacher that's been here for 20, it doesn't make a difference what role you serve. You're all important to the work of the district. And when people don't feel that way, that creates culture issues, and that's none of, we don't need any of that. Everybody's valued here. We need to find a way to bridge the gap. We need to continue to provide support, encouragement, and expectations and training for positive school-to-home connection. I think that's something we've done pretty well, but we need to continue to do it. We need to make sure that all of the professional development that we offer is valued and is utilized, but it's also what people that are receiving the training feel is worthwhile and not arbitrary. And we want to make sure that we're making those connections. I think the PD Committee is a really good first step in that department, something we've already started, but we need to get there. Facility needs and utilization, areas of strength. You know, we've done this a few times. I've never heard it come out like as strongly as it has in this one with such pride in our high school campus. A lot of people in our community expressed just a ton of pride in that campus, that it's used a lot, that people are there, they like it, they appreciate the facility, they think it's a beautiful building, a nice facility, that it compares well to other communities. A lot of really positive comments about our high school. And that it was well utilized and well-kept. Another strength that came out is that the district utilizes the funding that's available. Again, this is one of those range areas where there was lots of feelings here. But for the most part, people said that the district was utilizing the available funding well, making the updates that they could with what's available for funding. Not saying that we couldn't do better, but I think the prevailing perspective is that we did okay there. Areas of potential development, a lot of responses around the idea of we have funds already, you need to use the funds you got. Along with that, though, there was a lot of commonly referenced areas to devote those dollars to. HVAC came up a lot as an improvement area. And that was not just air cooling, that's air circulation, air quality. Those kinds of comments came up quite a bit. But equitable air conditioning did come up, and it's come up in a couple of these different ones. You know, why does one elementary student get and the other does not? You know, when are we going to fix third floor at the, you know, if all the sixth graders have to, you know, do their tour of duty in the hot box upstairs? You know, those kinds of feelings are still there. And then updating the boiler systems. I think people recognize that at the elementary level, that is a huge priority. And I think that does go to show that the communications have worked there, that we are sending that message, that those types of things need to be fixed. A number of respondents, and again, this is one of those that had a range of different opinions, but the majority of respondents that referenced this did talk about bringing more activities to or closer to the Jamestown High School campus. Reference similar to what Dr. Peterson was talking about. It's not safe to continue to run kids down to Ernie Gates or asking people to drive across town, asking our most, or least experienced drivers to drive the most around other hyperpopulated areas. Those were areas of concern for people. But they did say, seek other alternatives to build your own facilities. That was not an area that was supported to the same degree. You need to do something, but not your own thing. We aren't a community that's big enough to do that. It ties in very well to what actions you've already taken today. So recommendations in this area. We know that we have facility needs, and that support is there. But the opposite is also true, that people feel, hey, I'm taxed out. Not anything new to you. You already know this. People feel, hey, we want to do these things, we can't afford to do it. You know, I personally can't afford, you know, my taxes are too high. The interest is there to support, the interest isn't there to support financially for the most part. And that goes in, feeds pretty clearly into district tax levies. There are some pretty humorous responses here, but in terms of strengths of district tax levies, not a lot of comments here, although those that did felt like their tax burden was reasonable or appropriate. Although it was often qualified, but they're really high, which we understand. I don't think that's a surprise to anybody listening. Areas of potential development, you know, that it was high, we shouldn't be supporting, you know, that they couldn't support further tax increase. And that the other area for potential development, greater prioritization and budgeting, using what we have already rather than bringing another referendum. Using what we have. Again, that's kind of connected to some of the work that's already been suggested. So my recommendation there is, you know, your budget, your mill levy should likely stay pretty consistent in that for now, you should be looking to triage facility needs or find other solutions that don't raise people's taxes. Nobody ever wants to pay taxes, right? Nobody does. Everybody in this room pays taxes too. But the reality is, is we've had a pretty definitive voice here. And that voice has said, we've had enough. We're at our max. And I think, you know, we can continue to beat our head against the wall and say, but we have all these needs, or we can find a different solution. And it's, so that is the 20 pages that I have. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? It's extremely comprehensive. And on a side note, the air conditioner went off, so now we're in the hot box like the sixth graders. Sorry, sidebar. It's very comprehensive, and I do appreciate everybody's hard work on compiling all this information. It's very important to have the opinions of the people that are here, that are using our facilities, being able to communicate back to us so that we know where we're headed and if we're heading in the right direction. But then also to have a good foundation of what we have. So having that facility information in this report is vital for us to be able to know where those comments are coming from. So I appreciate everybody's input. I appreciate everybody's work putting it together in one location. And like Dr. Lex said, it's been sent out, and after we approve it, it will be available on the district website, so people can take their, and I do, I highly recommend, it really gives a really good snapshot of everything that's happening in our district, nuts and bolts. Jason?
Just real quick, and I might have missed it. Are the demographics of the respondents outlined anywhere, like X number of staff, X number of?
Right at the beginning, it kind of gave a description of who the, but it didn't break it down.
No, we don't say, it didn't say this many parents, this many, but the bulk, about half were parents. Staff was the next largest group.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Letter B, can I have a motion to approve the draft letter of support for the city of Jamestown's Renaissance Zone? Motion by Roger. Second by Steve. Any discussion? And maybe just a little comment, Dr. Lex, briefly?
So we had, five years ago, the board acted on this. And the time period is up. We had, late last week, Jameson Vale from the city of Jamestown asked us to, or asked me to communicate with the board and ask for that extension again. I think Jameson did a really nice job of outlining the values of a Renaissance zone to a community. Sometimes there can be confusion about what that means and what that really is. You know, at the end of the day, school districts benefit in taxable value growth. Whether that happens in one year or it happens five or 10 years down the road, that's a benefit to the district and did benefit to the community, I should say, is a better way to say that than just the school district. But any way, in my opinion, that we can enhance taxable value, enrich our community, ultimately benefits the entire community, including the school district. So by law, they do have to ask for the school district's support because of taxation. But my recommendation is to support as we did five years ago.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the negotiated Dietrich's bus contract for March 18 through March 24 in the amount of $104,941.40? Motion by Jason, second by Heidi. Discussion? And Heidi says, thank you for negotiating this. Any other discussion? And again, this is in response to the COVID lack of bus routes, but needing to reimburse them through the federal government, through the ESSR funds, but also making, understanding that we'll have impacts of the lack of these routes to deal with next year. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Just for clarification, you're saying a lack of funds that will be impacted because of the fewer routes?
Lack of routes. Yes. All right. Is there items? Is there items for future agenda? Mr. Tozo?
I noticed in the consent agenda, there was a report done on ESL students, and it seems like our numbers are on the rise. Maybe sometime after school starts, we could get a report on, on ESL and just what, what the instructors that deal with that program were doing.
Absolutely. We can do something, board education on our English, it's now EL, they change acronyms, you know, just like everything else, we change acronyms every couple of years about everything because we're teachers, I guess we do that. But it's now English learners, but we absolutely can do that, you know, with our EL, you know, that's one of the responsibilities administratively that's going to be restructured. I've talked with Mr. Delzer, he'll be the one taking over that, that particular responsibility.
Okay. Heidi?
I probably don't need to ask this because it'll probably be on a future agenda, but how, you know, kind of how summer school went with reentry, having students back on campus, and then the plans for fall. I also see that there are some conferences coming up that board members can also attend at the end of June here. You received some communication about that, but just kind of our, as we know more, you know, what our reentry plan is. And then one last thing, under G three, there's that handbook, the date was highlighted, but just make sure that date gets updated to the current date. It was highlighted, but it was last year's date, so just make sure we update the date on G three. Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay. Our meetings to be scheduled, there is, it's not on the agenda, but we do have a health insurance committee meeting on June twenty-second at three PM. That is to be determined whether it would be virtual or in the district conference room. And then the next school board meeting will be Monday, July twentieth, at five fifteen here in the Thompson Community Room. Please remember to right-click on the superintendent's evaluation and do the sections that are appropriate, and also right-click on your adjournment. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.